It's working.
Huh?
It's all working, working?
Yeah.
After our three hours of practice, we're gonna have to look coming down here. Set next to it.
At your leisure. Do you have any remaining work? You're right.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we have justice for all. Dear heaven, Father, be with the same name of the people, the citizens, the city, and the community in Jesus' name, amen.
This is going to be item six. We've got approval of the agenda for October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Regular planning commission meeting.
Looked to approve the agenda for October fourteen, twenty twenty four.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Item D is citizens' comments. If there's one we allow citizens' comments, anything that may be necessary, each citizen is allowed to reach unless stated first and last name or reside, and that would be it. So, at this point, if you open citizens' comments, we will open citizens' comments. We have Mayor, and we have Mr. Paul Norris who's here for item F one.
Alright.
Close citizens' comments and citizens' comments. Thank you very much.
I'll just say that I checked in on the line dancing next door and got rolled my ankle, just put it on the table.
But we're happy you survived. So am I. This is item E. Approval of the minutes for September ninth, twenty twenty four. Regular planning commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So item F four is under the appeals. This is F one. This is a conditional use permit, CUP, for an open-sized garage case number CUP twenty four dash one. Now, quick background. Paul Norris has been announced for the conditional use permit. A detached garage whose property exceeds the one thousand four hundred forty square feet maximum. The current regulations state that detached garage cannot exceed one thousand four hundred forty square feet unless the conditional use permit has been approved by a board of zoning appeals for a larger structure. The conditional use permit requires publication of the CUP from twenty eighth to the last reported and considered by the boards of appeals. The conditional use permit also requires that as we sell it, it go within two hundred feet of property within ceilings and bound to the access limits. Area question is off of one hundred ninety nine. We are six street, Maple, and we can even shade states. So, according to Article six point one hundred point B of the regulations, the living accessory use is any structural use. That complies with the terms of section six, when A may be allowed as an accessory use or structure, and may be included as on loan to the following list. Off street parking lot space as regulated by the five use regulations, including detached garages and carports, unlocks for single-family, two-story dwellings, and all types of manufactured mobile homes. Such structures may contain ceiling space for storage and other uses, and are limited to one each per zoning lot, not over fourteen forty square feet, where a square area for garage and four hundred for carport. Plus, conditional use permits approved by boards of zoning appeals for a larger structure. So, the boards of zoning appeals is considering approving a detached garage that exceeds the maximum one thousand four hundred forty square feet. Property owners are asking for two thousand four hundred square feet. Request does not exceed the maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent on an R one. The lot square feet is eighty-eight thousand one hundred sixteen. Total lot coverage is the house plus the detached garage, plus the covered porch is five, is five thousand three hundred thirty. The total lot coverage is about six percent. As mentioned, this is going to be lot A, lot B, even shade states. This one is right up here in this area. This is the even shade states. Use three larger lots off of one hundred ninety and Maple Hill, which is six street. This is a plot plan. So this is the house, which I believe is on construction. I haven't actually, but this would be where the house is located. This is the detached garage that they are asking for.
I like your previous picture, one before that. Sixth Street of Maple?
Yes. Yes. I can't remember exactly when it goes from Maple to Sixth Street. You want to say it's, you want to mean third?
Never.
It's always the same? Depends on the town.
Just like twenty thirty, probably.
Yeah.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
He's not kidding, I'm gonna let him show them.
This, this is the, the new, that new part that we just...
Yes, the even shade states. These, these three are even shade states, and this is going to be the Maple Tree development.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I, make that distinction too. This is what Paul Norris is developing these three. Paul Kelsey is developing Maple Tree.
Okay.
This is thirty-five acres over here, which you haven't seen in terms of plating, anything like that, yet.
Yeah.
Zoning, you've seen it, but not plating. And these three over here are still R one, single family.
And the one in question is the sharp vertical?
Yeah, it's this one over here. These are, you wouldn't really call these urban scale lots. They're larger, more rural scale lots, and so these are a lot of streets that go on. That's why he's asking for the detached. Even with the detached garage, it's only going to equal six percent of the lot coverage.
You guys feel a bit worried about there any, for anything like that?
No, honestly, with this one, this was something that I've often talked about, the plating of the even shades. When they're so large like that, there's no retention because the acreage that's being, impervious that's being introduced is dwarfed by the vesque that's going to be introduced simultaneously. And so they don't have any requirement for retention. Now, they plating for Maple Tree, they will. Because they're going to be urban scale lots, and so they're going to have to have a retention pond, things of that nature. But these is over here now so much. But it's going to generally just be absorbed into the surrounding environment.
On the previous picture on the, from the block to the west, this west over there, is that, is that all owned by the, this gentleman with the, the dark box there?
Yeah, so these three are even shade, just these three. This area over here is thirty-five acres. That's going to be owned by Paul Kelsey, but Maple Tree. So Maple Tree will affect through this tree row.
Okay.
Can be part of this bigger development here. Evening shade is one, two, three lots, and it's private drive right here. The city's recommended a planning mission. Happy planning mission chair, open the public hearing. And then both public hearing approve the conditional use permit, application case number CUP twenty four dash one. So, Mr. Chair, this point, do you want to open the public hearing?
Pull up the public care?
Mr. Norris is here. If you guys do have any questions. So, if you do have questions, you ask for Norris, for free, at this time.
Any questions? This is Greg.
Right.
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Nope. Alright, we'll close the motion.
I'm looking for the conditional use permit.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? City and none, city and none. Thank you very much. Mr. Norris, if you want, you can stay for the rest of the night, or if not, have a good evening. If you want, you can stay for the rest of the night, or if not, have a good evening. They passed it. They put it away. Okay? Yeah, go follow up. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
This is item F two. This is a lot split amendment to the subdivision regulations. So, with the introduction of duplexes and twin homes and two ceilings, the city is looking at a way to expedite and create the lot split requirements that are outlined in the city limits. The city also believes that there may be a conflict in interpretation of the city subdivision regulations in reading Article two point one oh two and Article twelve point one twenty-two point one through twelve point one twenty-two point three. The city would like, as the care, to accomplish several objectives in the, in the adoption of this ordinance, and they are outlining those follows. So, we would like to expedite the process for lots of approval by having the city staff approve the lots splits administratively, so we just review and approve in the house. We would also like, in determining the conflict between Article two and Article twelve, if Article two is invoked, it shall be considered greater than Article twelve, and Article twelve will be considered subordinate to Article two. Any applicant agreed by decision of the city, uh, city staff in the appeal, report the planning commission. So, city legal definitely wanted to make sure that was clear as well, that if we did take it as an administrative process, that if somebody was agreed by an administrative process, that they could come to you and say, hey, we feel like it shouldn't have been approved, but staff did not approve it, and we want you guys to adjudicate on their behalf and kind of review the process. The difference between Article two and Article twelve is Article two says, if you have a duplex and you're splitting it into a twin home, you have to do a lot split. Article twelve says, if you do a lot split, you must file, you must abide by these criteria. And so, it's hard to determine if Article two is saying you must do this and violate Article twelve hypothetically if, if the duplex, if you split it and the, the lots that they create are smaller than the minimum amount that's allowed in that zoning classification. So, let me go back to that real quick. Basically, let me go back to actually line, and we'll just kind of take a look at that. Hypothetically, let's say this was a duplex, and he's saying, I want it to be, make this a twin home. And we, Article two says, well, if you want to make it a twin home, you have to split it down the middle. Like, you have to do that. But, let's say with R one, the minimum is sixty by one hundred. That, that is the minimum in an R one zoning, sixty by one hundred. So, if you split this down the middle, and this one's fifty by one hundred here, and fifty by one hundred here on this side, then what holds sway? Article twelve, which says you can't create a non-conforming lot, or Article two, which says you have to split it. And so, that's kind of where I'm at, and like I said, when I get scared or confused, I bring it before you guys, and I want you guys to figure it out for me. So, that's where I'm like, okay, there's going to be a lot of twin homes, probably. I mean, as people move forward, they're going to be selling, there's going to be a lot of duplexes, and we can say that. And there's definitely going to be a lot of splitting of duplexes. So, instead of bringing them before you, again and again and again, we thought perhaps it made more sense to prove them administratively unless somebody was agreed by that process. Then also, if we're saying you have to split them, then perhaps it would be considered conforming then at that point. And so that's kind of a question that's come up. I think that right now, we would say that Article two holds sway. Like, we would say that Article two is saying you have to split it. Or either that, or you're denying Article two. You're saying that you can't split it based on Article twelve. And so that's, the way I've drafted it, the way I've drafted it right now is it's saying that Article two is going to win. It's going to say that you have to split it, you have to create two separate parcel IDs. If it creates nonconformity, then it creates nonconformity, and you have to report that. And that city staff can approve administratively. That way, you guys don't have to see a hundred lot splits reported to the future. But, as mentioned, the city attorney said, make sure you make it so that planning commission approves, or at least considers an agreed, an agreed party if they, if they say that that's not fair, like you denied it for whatever reason. So, because that would be, Article two is specifically talking about twin homes. So hypothetically, let's go back to that situation again. Let's say that it's not a twin home. Let's say that Paul Norris is saying, man, that's a lot of lot here. I, I have built them in a house, but I don't need this much lot space. I want to just split this off. Cut that off and sell separately to maybe a family member or something. If he split it and it was fifty by one hundred again, and R one is sixty by the one hundred as a minimum, I would say you can't do that because it creates a nonconforming lot per Article twelve. And if that's the case, then he could say, well, that's not fair. Why are you denying me when you're denying all these duplexes? They didn't come before the planning commission and say, might be unreasonable. In which case, you guys can decide if that's true or not, and that's, that's reasonable, and that, and that could be the case. But, does that kind of make sense, and have I outlined that? Do you guys have any questions about that? Do you feel like that's an unreasonable amendment to the subdivision regulations, and do you have any concerns? Obviously, anything that you do at this point, you would say, you go for the public hearing, close the public hearing, approve the amendment. It's a recommendation that you would, and then of course, we'd have to go to city council for final approval. So, anytime we change the subdivision regulation, we publish it twenty days, take it before you guys. If you guys consider it reasonable, then you make a recommendation that it is reasonable, or if you think it's unreasonable, then you make that recommendation that you feel it's unreasonable and you want to deny it. In which case, whatever you say would then go before city council. If you say it's unreasonable, you want to deny it, and city council would have to veto you for a super majority, which would be four out of five. So, four out of five city members. So hypothetically, if only four members were present, let's say one of them was sick, all four would have to vote in favor. It doesn't become three out of four at that point. Hypothetically, if you said, yes, you think it is reasonable, and city council said, they want to veto you based on the fact that they don't think it's reasonable, once again, it would trigger a super majority. They would have to vote four out of five to veto you in the, in the inverse direction. So... I feel sometimes it's good to just bring that into clarity.
So, what about moving forward? Anytime duplexes being go, we'd make sure the lot's big enough, where if they want to split on a future date?
Yes. So, the way Article two is written, it does say that if it's pre-platted, well, you don't need to split them, but if they're not pre-platted, you need to split them. Well, the way we're moving forward now, and I actually had a developer reach out and ask about this very recently, because there's a potential for another duplex development coming on the horizon. And so I said, would you just, if it is approved, do the zoning, which you know you would see it, council would see it. If that's approved, can you just pre, pre-plat it that way with the lots being split, so that they're smaller? And he said he has no issue with that, just...
Even if he wants to use those duplexes?
Yeah, so...
Still split them?
That's kind of a question. So that's a question for council as well, because the, if he's saying, I just want duplexes and I don't want to split them, well hypothetically, they could still be duplexes, even if they're split down the middle, you still just have ownership. Instead of planning taxes on just one lot, you pay a tax on both lots. You still have single ownership. You can't force them to sell them. But it would create a bunch of, it'd create additional lots for them. So that might just be considered a headache. So I just brought that up to this developer and said, hey, do you have any issue hypothetically? Let's say that hypothetically, this, this project had twenty lots. I say, could you just split them upfront so that you have forty lots? He said there's no issue there.
But, but in doing that, then he would have to comply with the lot size.
Yes, so that's another question that would have to come up.
If he pre-does it, he has to, they have to be conformed. They have to conform, right?
Unless Article two, unless Article two is invoked.
Right. But if it doesn't exist already, how can you, how can Article two? You're not forced to split it, which in this situation you wouldn't be because there is no existing structure.
Right.
They would have to be conforming. Twelve would take precedent.
Yes, possibly. It just depends on what kind of zoning you ask for. Because the zoning would dictate the, the lot size. Most people, when they go R two, it becomes thirty-five by one hundred.
Right.
Thirty-five is pretty small. So, normally people would say, I want to do R two, I want to do R two for all of it. And then they pre-plat it, have all the lots pre-split, and thirty-five by one hundred is for all run.
Right.
So it just depends on zoning. Yes, good, good, good question. And once again, that kind of ties into the legality of the subdivision regulations and how you're trying to maneuver through it. Are you forcing them after the fact or before the fact? If you're forcing them flat before the fact, are they plating with the assumption that the zoning is going to conform? Hopefully, that would be ideal, or not, then you can create nonconforming issues. And then banks call you and be saying, well, technically, you cannot perform. So we're sensitive to that, and that's a good question. Typically, what they'll, what you'll see is they'll just ask for R two for the whole thing, and then they'll plat the whole thing with thirty-five by one hundred lots. So that you will have half of it, and once I have it, it'll, it'll, it's going to be conforming because they'd be thirty-five by one hundred. If it's R two. R four is got, if they want to do R four, it'd be wide open, and they could pretty much be as small as they want to.
Right.
No, that's, that's a good question. In terms of order of operation, that's a good question.
I guess we can talk again here. Let's open the public hearing.
You okay?
Yeah.
What's the last item? Where are you?
Let me introduce our fourth floor ten, River Road. I guess my question would just be, from a real estate perspective, is just understanding why we have them in them lot sizes in the first place and what that purpose and intent's for? And, and deciding on, like, if, what you're talking about, like, if you decide to go away with it and not having those, but just understanding, because even for real estate, I still understand why you can have something smaller on R two but not on R one. But if we're looking at this situation, I agree that we're going to have issues with if we allow for the lot splits but not allow for a single family. Really identifying why we have those minimums, and if we still need those minimums. Because if we can look at those minimums of maybe not needing them, or what the true intent is for them, maybe we can open up to where it can be allowed for other things too, and not just restricted to one versus the other. So, that'd be my thing, is just, I don't know the answer to that, so whether or not you guys do, or he can research it, but just understanding, that was set for some reason. Just understanding the reasons why before we decide what to do, you know, going forward with this. That, that makes sense.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just kind of tie into that. The history is what you see over time. You probably were in this, but back in the... In the earlier part of, of like nineteen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds, lots were very small. In fact, if you look at the history of Gauder, you know, they had twenty-five by one hundred. That was like the lot size. And then they went up to fifty by one hundred, and then went up to seventy-five by one hundred. And then what you saw is that since land had gone up, when, when you start developing more and more and more in specific area, the land prices start going up higher and higher and higher. So then lands start selling for ten thousand acres, or fifteen thousand acres, or twenty thousand acres, or thirty thousand acres. Recently, developers are telling me they're buying land at forty thousand an acre. If that's the case, that they just want to maximize, one developer told me, I try to leave everyone's names off the, out of the record, but one developer said, I'm trying to get a three to one return on forty thousand dollars per acre, three to one return. If that's the case, he wants to sell as many lots as possible, which means that the lots get smaller and smaller. So what you, what you saw is that over time, lots were small, and then the planning perspective was that you wanted to have green space. You want to have backyards, side yards, front yards, and the lots started getting bigger. That, that was sort of the common theory at the time, is that you want to create green space at the same time as you have an urban development. But then, as costs go up in a specific area, then you start seeing lots getting smaller, and then planners start taking into perspective the idea of what's called a fiscal impact analysis. If I have to, as a city, provide a mile of water and sewer to just ten lots, it's not very cost-effective for the city because that mile of sewer and water could be a million dollars now, and one point five million dollars later, and I'm only serving ten lots. That's generating maybe two thousand dollars in property taxes, and that cash flow is not enough to do the maintenance of the infrastructure that's serving those ten lots. And so lots start getting smaller because then you're going to get more revenue off the infrastructure that's serving those lots. And so that's kind of, you're seeing this kind of over time. It started here, and it got bigger as people acquired more wealth and, and as they started generating more revenue and, you know, as they sold their first house, and their second house, and their third house, then they wanted to get more land. It's the same argument that you see when you have rezonings, and you have county people come in and they say, hey, why can't the lots just be five acres? And why can't the houses be seven hundred thousand? And so that's kind of the same issue that you're running into, where it's like they go from here, and then they get smaller again. And so, it's really just kind of an economic driving force. But in this particular case, it just has to do with us creating a parcel ID. So that one person, if, so one person buys half of the duplex, and another person buys half of the duplex, they have two separate tax IDs. They have two separate tax IDs. So I'll have to say it's about taxes. Sure. Taxes and everything. All right, we closed the public hearing. So just as a minor, three things. You guys, we haven't seen a lot split anymore unless somebody gets upset at me. Article two would take precedent over Article twelve. And we would try to have people pre-plat in front end so that we wouldn't have lots splits. Because also it makes it easier to do special assessments. You don't have to do a respread in the specials, which makes it a lot easier for people. If approved, once again, it has to go to the city council or by final approval to amend subdivision regulations.
Are there plans on this side? Sorry?
So in the future, if someone who's already split, somebody wanted to build a single family, don't mind, they could do the R2 then?
You could in R2. You could build a single family in R2, but it'd be, you could build R2, yeah. So if there's a single family, anyone who built a thirty-five by one hundred, you could build a house on there. I haven't seen, Paul Kelsey's studying that concept over on one sixty-seven, those shotgun-style homes on one sixty-seven? I mean, it goes with thirty-five by one hundred. Yeah, you could build a single family out of thirty-five by one hundred, technically.
But you.
We wouldn't stop you.
But you couldn't, you would have to, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to build on both lots. You'd have to, you'd just, you'd just need to split.
No, I mean, in theory, let's say in theory that they split them all upfront and they rezoned with R2 and then they said, I don't actually want duplexes. We'd rather have a bunch of single-family homes. Technically, they could do that unless we thought you didn't want that. And then you could approve the zoning contingent upon, you can vote in city council, of course, but you could approve zoning saying, I want it to only be duplexes. We'd have to enter into a development agreement saying, only duplexes would be allowed, no single-family because they think, you know, they're too small or for whatever. But I've had this, I had a long conversation with the city committee last week about this. The way this is written, so we'll be talking about that a little bit more. But what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and development agreements with developers saying, you can't do this. Like, we will allow you to have this, but no more, right? That type of situation? If you wanted to hypothetically do it that way, we're like, no, I want these to be duplexes. I don't want a bunch of small, single-family homes. You could force that through the development agreement. But yeah, technically, if it's rezoned R2, and this hypothetical developer's like, ah, I don't want to be duplexes. Never mind, that's a bad idea. I just want a bunch of single-family. Technically, they could put them on thirty-five by one hundred.
Or they could overlap the lots and you just, the owner would have to buy two lots, right? And then he buys two lots.
Yeah. In Wichita, when they do that, Neil Straw before the retiree said that he doesn't do boundary line adjustments when they buy two lots. They're considered bounding together when somebody drops a house in the middle. I don't like that. So what I do is I force people to do boundary line adjustments. Like, hey, you bought two lots. In fact, this is already in the subdivision regulations. I can approve them straight away. So I do that. I've had a gentleman who's buying lots off of East South Street right now, right next to that utility shed that's sitting out there. You know what I'm talking about? Just kind of north of the pool. The gentleman's buying two lots. And he said, hey, I want to drop a house right in the middle. I said, okay, you need to do boundary line adjustment, which removes that center line and makes it one contiguous parcel. So you have one, one tax ID. And the reason I do that is try to help people out because we've had issues where people don't know that they bought two lots. They think that's just a house, and they don't pay taxes on the second lot. And they become a default of their pool, which is in the backyard, because they didn't realize they had two tax, two separate tax IDs. So the default on one, and they're on, they're paying their taxes. And it's not to us, obviously. It's to the Kansas Department of Revenue and Second County, of course. But we're just trying to help people again to keep them from having to pay in this in the future. It's technical. So I just do a boundary line, just put them together. We have that in our gallery too. When a dude wants to put some lots together and he wants to cut other lots and merge them, that's a boundary line adjustment. This is a lot split. This is a boundary line adjustment, right? And so just making sure, who wants to buy to buy them, makes it cleaner, makes it cleaner for everyone.
So that option's still there if we get this one, this one going through?
Yeah. I mean, it just kind of depends. There's so many situations out there. I've had somebody for boundary line adjustment, I don't think you guys want to hear them all, but I had a gentleman off Easy Street. He wanted to build, he bought two lots, he had a house, and he wanted to build a detached garage on the second lot. And I said, no, because I'm mean. And so I said, no, because technically, detached garage is considered subordinate to the principal structure. You can't have a subordinate structure as a standalone on an individual lot. I said, you have to do a boundary line adjustment. That way, you merge. And he did, of course, and so he's got a nice detached garage. But I, I won't allow people to have accessory structures as a standalone structure on an individual lot. You have to merge the two. That way, you don't run into the same issue. What if in the future he sold that? Well, somebody buys it, they don't, they're paying their taxes on their house, and they don't know the default on their detached garage. So. Yeah, exactly.
So we get just the last thing here. So do we conclude that Article twelve would trump Article two if they do it ahead?
Yes, yeah, so.
That's going to happen regardless, or we need to make that specific, or?
They didn't want it heard to make that specific. I mean, right now, Article two says, if it's pre-platted with smaller lots that are already split, then great. But if it's not, then you have to split it. And then Article twelve says you can't create a non-conforming lot. So I'm saying Article two is trumping Article twelve, we're forcing you to split it, which would create non-conformity, generally speaking, if the zoning doesn't allow that. So if you want to see it do something differently, we could.
My question makes sense?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what we want?
My question is if Article twelve trumped Article two?
Right. Or vice versa, what does Article two trump? At what point in the process, I guess, right?
I would say that if somebody has a bunch, has a duplex and they're like, I want to sell half and another half. And the lot, let's say the lot is forty by one hundred. And they built that, they built a duplex, and they're able to split it and sell half to one person, half to other. I would say Article two would win.
Because the structure exists. If the structure doesn't exist, are we going to say twelve wins? And in that case, that could screw up all the lots if they want to split.
Yes, and that's a good, I would say twelve would win in that particular case. Because, but at the same time, two is still, you're supposed to be plating before that, which we would have to do. So we would say, platter it in advance of anticipating that happening. And then that way, it doesn't create non-conformity. Ideally. And that's a good question, though. And I, to be fair, my draft is I try to see in the future, I can't see all possible outcomes and so. It's just, it is very possible that you run into a situation. The ideal is that, from what I understand, just generally from these conversations, is that you would want ownership instead of renters winning in specific situations. And so if we can allow them to buy half of it, then you need to have, you'd want them to have their own separate tax ID. And so then, two, we'd say, let them split it, even though that's creating a level of non-conformity. But we could say that if we force them to split it, it does create non-conformity. Since two wins, it's not considered non-conformity. We could say that as well. It just depends on who's reading subdivision regulations.
Right.
But at the end, there was a situation that isn't spelled out enough by this, that they're going to be agreed in a form of law.
You guys would have to see it, yeah.
So it's happening, we can blame you.
Yes, for sure, a hundred percent. Yeah, no, it probably would. Ideally, like I said, if it's a big development, you would say, platter it upfront and make it easier for everybody, right? If it's a development, I don't know, if it's a development that they're like, no, we want to sell a section of it now as twin homes and it's, everything's already built, then yeah, that could create a potential issue if they're saying, hey, we're going to vote Article two, we're going to split it all, but they're twenty by one hundred per lot. Technically, that's non-conformity in an R2, you know, so how does that work out? I would just say that Article two would win. It would just say that these are now considered conforming. In, you know, in lieu of the, in spite of the zoning that says, hey, this is the minimum lot size. I would say Article two would win. So.
So I, I think what we're getting at, though, or I think at least where I'm understanding this leading to is the, it would be who the developer, though, if he wanted to maximize his quantity of lots, meaning smaller lots, he's better off to go with, get through the process and then invoke Article two to split. Whereas if he splits at the beginning, then he's, in Article twelve run rules, and he's going to have bigger overall lots. But when he splits them, they still come to a quiet.
Yeah, no, and that's, most of the time, engineering firms, the developer is usually just the one who has the money. They don't know about the subdivision regulations. So they usually hire an engineering firm to book that process. And not to say they're completely ignorant, but it's just that they need somebody more technical to help them. So usually, their engineering firm represents them, and they'll come to me and I'll say, these are your avenues to get to your end goal. To create potential future issues, you'd want to go this way. And this way would be just split them upfront during the plating process and avoid any potential issue. Because if you split them upfront, then that would be much better. And then if you split them upfront, knowing that your lots are going to be this dig by this dig, then this is the zoning you want. And this is how you should platter that zoning. They usually, they know. They want to know, they know how much they're going to be maximizing off each development. They're going to say, I want to get a hundred lots off of however many acres instead of that. What do you want to put on it? How do you want to build that? We're going to have this meeting tomorrow. In fact, we're going to talk about that process. It's like, what do you want? Don't change it. They don't, they rarely do. I've never really seen a lot of people go like, oh, I changed my mind, I want to build a fence strip or something like that. It just doesn't happen. So it's a lot of money. By the time they get to us, they've already studied, they've hired an engineering firm, they've bought the land, it's something, a lot of money. So to deviate after borrowing money from the bank, generally not going to happen. Mr. English will probably be able to testify to that fact. But you're assuming when you go to the bank and borrow money to buy the land, the bank is going to look at your pro forma and you're saying, I'm building X number of units with these particular land uses. And I'm going to cash flow, my net operating income is going to be this, my internal, my internal rate of return is going to be this. If you didn't say, just kidding, right, the bank's going to be like, wait a minute, you can't really, that's not how that works. But that's a good question, though. But we would just say, this is how we want it for, if you want to execute this ideal. And this is the way to avoid issues in the future. That's a good question, though. Non-conformity can be an issue with banks because they want to know if something burns down, they may rebuild it. They want to know if they're messing the city. So non-conformity can be an issue.
Can you create a minimum lot size for a duplex?
No, it's by zoning. So you can have a duplex in R2, R3, and on R4. And so the minimum lot size is dependent by zoning.
So R potentially have one on a lot that's thirty-five by one hundred in R2.
Oh, yeah. In fact, yeah, yeah. Rested, anything?
Yeah. I'll approve the proposal.
I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the subdivision regulations.
I'm sorry, man. All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seeing that, considering, thank you very much, I appreciate it. This one is going to take a little more time, so feel free to ask a lot of questions and weigh in the current states. So I would like to trigger the substantial subdivision regulations. I'm going to spoil it later. I'm going to actually ask you guys to table this one, or possibly deny it because of the way I drafted it, ran afoul of legal. And so I need to, I need to reconsider how it's applied. So that's just a spoiler. But I'm going to run through it because I've already put it together. And then we can go into it, and then I'll ask you guys to either deny it or table it. And we can decide how we want to go forward with it at that point. So as City grows, the possibility of the additional provisions onto the development has come up. This possibility is also, there's another cities that wish to enforce their architectural requirements on an area that may have the solar slinkers or increase the specific design features. City staff has discussed this before in terms that pass this approach to the Overly District. Excuse me. In several rezoning cases, the city council by intention asks that developers report a restrictive covenant outlining what additional restrictions would look like to each individual development. The Overly District proposes that objective and define, define what type and manner of an imposition is and application of it will be similar to rezoning cases with a presentation and planning permission by final approval by city council. There will be no publication requirement as an imposition placed upon the property by owners of legislation under mutually good upon the semi-performing body. Planning permission is reviewing changing subdivision regulations introduced an Overly District option into the subdivision regulations and overly district functions by adding additional requirements onto the subdivision regulations for a specific area. It supplements the zoning of that area and does its planting, and it has an outline of how to be applied. It outlines how application is submitted and approved. So this is kind of part and parcel of how I had envisioned it. But the applicant or representative shall submit application determined by the city. Application shall have the following documents required along with a final fee as determined below. Application form, narrative description, other plans, drawings, or information, a certified ownership list, a final fee, which we have to determine how much. And then if somebody wanted to revoke it, it would go through the same process as outlined above. So financially, we did, of course, do a public notice around twenty days in which we can, we take it to the planning commission and have it approved by city council. But after reviewing the Robert Fortinell and Boris Lang, it is decided that the format of Overly District passed would not be the most practical way to accomplish specific goals in the city. But if the general intent was not unreasonable, having our own purposes that most cities do consider realizing, utilizing that to be a purpose. So we'll kind of break that down. It is recommended that planning commission, public hearing, close public hearing, and table the amendment to the subdivision regulations, or possibly deny it. Reason being, I'm going to go back. Excuse me. So several rezoning cases, city council by intention asks different developers to report a restrictive covenant outlining what additional restrictions will be applied to each individual development. Here, Robert Fortinell said, that's not an Overly District. That's a development agreement. And we need to be clear about that, that we would, planning commission would say, Mr. Developer, we're okay with your rezoning. However, we would want to consider it approved contingent upon a development agreement being approved by city council, forcing the restriction upon yourself. Not an Overly District. Robert and I went back and forth about the application of an Overly District. And we generally did agree that an Overly District is predefined by the planning commission and the city council and adopted into subdivision regulations as something that applies to a specific area and no other. So it's not as needed. It's simply, let's say downtown. Like, let's just say it's from Santa Fe to fifty-four. This Overly District shall be classified as classic Goddard, or whatever you want to call it. And we define what's specific in classic Goddard, and it only applies to that area. And you don't then change it to another development or try to have a different Overly District or a different Overly District and a different one, different definitions. An Overly District is defined through the planning commission and then adopted by the city council almost like another zoning classification, like a PUD or an R2 or R1. It's like a zoning classification that ends up on top of existing zoning, but it doesn't change from there unless you guys decide you want it to change. So I was wrong in its application. And so I needed to make sure you guys were aware of that, that at first I was wrong. Rarely ever happens, but it needs to be made abundantly clear that in its current draft, which is a mere attachment, it would not function this way. So it would be irregular. So I would not ask that you adopt it. I would need to go back to the drawing board. However, that being. However, that being said, an overlay district, the way it's traditionally used, like in Wichita and other cities, is kind of of the spirit that we have talked about before, of having a specific area like downtown that has different architectural standards, um, wings coating from top to bottom, and maybe around the sides. No, no marten buildings in downtown areas. That is something that an overlay district could function as, if it was predefined by the planning commission, adopted by city council. You could say, this overlay district is now called classic garden, and you shall not have any metal buildings in here. The zoning doesn't change, but you say, hey, on top of the zoning, we're going to say no metal buildings. That would have to be introduced into the subdivision regulations as an overlay district. But it, like I said, it would not change after that, unless you guys changed it. And it would be very specific to that geography. So that, that being said. At this point, I do think we would want an overlay district, but I think we wish, we need to discuss it some more about how that overlay district would be built by the planning commission, what you guys would want to see, where it would be applied specifically, and then we would kind of go from there. It's not meant to be a as-needed tool. I was wrong about that. It's not sort of this developer asks for this, and then you put an overlay district on him. And this developer asks for this, and then you put another overlay district on that one. It's not to be, it's not supposed to function that way. And so I'm just going to ask you, really, probably, to open, close, maybe deny, would probably be the best. So I can go back to the drawing board and reconsider how this overlay district is going to play out. Honestly, it would tie more into what Commissioner Hayden had talked about with the COF plan. This would be something that you would, you during the comprehensive plan, where you would have specific overlay districts in specific parts of the city that supplement zoning areas to say, you know, maybe you won't have lots be thirty-five by one hundred in this area. Or I want to see better architectural standards. I, I want to see wings coating only in this area. You can't have metal buildings. That would be something that planning commission would have to consider. We would define overlay district status specifically and consider during the comprehensive planning process. But not at this time, I think. So. My apologies for wasting your time. And I would just definitely ask that you open, close, and deny. And then that denial, recommendation goes to city council, where I can bring up the fact that I was wrong again, and ask them to deny that point as well. So, for shower.
Well, welcome to public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. You need a motion to deny the amendment to the subdivision.
Yes, please.
I like that motion. So.
Wait till you hear the second one.
Paul and Trevor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that, as we all live together. Old business, there is none, new business, there is none. Staff report, so just a reminder, we do have a tribe, I mean, um, from the sixteen, that's it's Wednesday at six P M. Right now, I have Justin Parks, Derek Klein, Jamie Coin, and Chris Williams. I do want to get another count, just to make sure who can still go, who can't go. If you guys want to swap positions, anything of that nature. So let's go ahead and start at the top. Um, Commissioner Parks, I used to lay over at ten. Yes. Okay. You, you have a good, okay, very good.
I'll be there.
All right.
If I make number four, I will be there.
Okay.
I would prefer the four.
Okay.
That's a big one, but I would be, if I made number four, I would be there.
Okay. Um, you're not? You can be there, okay. Okay. So, Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Klein, Commissioner Milligan, Commissioner Williams, and Commissioner Coin can be a, a fill-in, but at this point, we wouldn't need to.
Okay.
At this point, if you guys are okay, excuse me, share a coin from that. If you may, okay, that. Okay. Then I have Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Klein, Commissioner Milligan, and Commissioner Williams. Will be in attendance Wednesday, which will be this upcoming Wednesday at six o'clock here, City Hall, where we'll have a, um, a vitacious conversation with the city council and the school district.
I didn't know it was that easy to get out of something like that. That's pretty slow.
There's a chance on the media.
As fun, I'll move on. Before I move on, I'm Jay, I should, I'll go back. November, uh, planning commission is November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. So we have a day off, and, which usually kicks it to Tuesday, which would be the twelfth, which is court. So then that usually kicks it to the next day, which is the fifteenth of November, which is a Wednesday. At that point, and I think it would be prudent to just determine if, if we have enough people now for a quorum on November thirteenth. If not, perhaps you would consider canceling the November planning commission. If you guys feel like you wouldn't have quorum, I would hate for you to have, you know, three of them show up, immediately say, we don't have quorum, and close immediately. It would probably be best just to say, don't have quorum now, and just not have a November planning commission meeting. Like I said, it's the eleventh, but now it's going to be the thirteenth because of court and Veterans Day. So that would be Wednesday, seven o'clock, November thirteenth. Is there anybody who feels like they can't be there? We'll start that way. Is there anybody at this point, do we just assume we can all make it? Commissioner Parks, I guess I do need to roll. Commissioner.
I will check.
Okay. Commissioner Coin, Mr. Coin, Walker, Milligan. Okay. Well, then we will have planning commission on November thirteenth, at seven P M at this point. Last two planning missions, November and December, that's every year. So then, of course, I'll give you guys a recap of December and probably the stuff that comes with it. At this point, I'm going to, item Jay, any additional comments? More comments?
I guess I would say, and I don't know if this subject would come up at the meeting on Wednesday. Um, I apologize for not being there, but, I mean, in general terms, I am not a fan of a moratorium, specifically around duplexes, but in general, I don't think the absolute is a good approach to different handling of that situation. So, and again, I don't know if that topic will arise then, but.
Not sure. Yeah.
What's the current status of that? Did that get, that pass, or is that on hold, or is that coming up for discussion again?
Uh, right now, the council has tabled it indefinitely. We haven't had a big update yet. So right now, it's just kind of floating around, but we haven't had a big update. I think that, uh, I think it's fair to say that not all the council members are on the same page about it. What they want to see in terms of is it ratio, is it a moratorium? Um, is a moratorium against just duplexes? Are we talking about twin homes at the same time? And so I think that there doesn't seem to be a complete consensus on that. So right now, it's been tabled, um, when the mayor and, and meets with Craig in the future and they decide they want to take it up again, perhaps then we'll, we'll see what happens. But right now, I can't say. Right now, it's just, it's just floating out there. All right. Okay. So to be in general, this next regular planning commission meeting, meeting November thirteenth, Wednesday, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. And of course, I will see Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Klein, Commissioner Milligan, Commissioner Williams, this Wednesday at six o'clock. You guys want me calling you Tuesday night?
No, probably not.
Very good.
I just want to know if you have the backup slide in case you set.
Like I said, I do like to look into the future, but it's not always succinct. Um.
All right. Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second. Paul and Trevor?
We could also.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.